Second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor?
Madam President, I'll ask Ms. Hunt to come up here and begin this process.
Before we start...
Do you want this?
I don't need that. Before we start, we have a presentation for each of you. Go. Each of you get a loaf of bread. And Robert Denman told me he ate his last time, so you get another loaf, Robert. Okay? Alright, thank you. And sorry, Mayor, you didn't get that kind. You got banana bread. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much. And I do want to thank all of y'all for all the support that you do for Biloxi Public Schools and Biloxi Excel by Five. Before I go any further, I am really excited. As you all know, this film is no longer our student tenant. But today, who's going to be with us is our annual student tenant, Dr. Larry Doughty. If you would please stand, Dr. Doughty. Come on. Some of us in college, some of us working. Just a couple of years. Okay. As you all know, I mean, Kenny, you kissed about Excel by Five, about the immunization factor. That will kick off Saturday. That will kick off Coastal Family Health in 92. And it's for children, school age children ages five and thirteen. And then on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we'll be at Lowpays. And all of this is on the website and the media thing. My phone number is on here if you need any information. It's for ages five and thirteen. All you have to do is bring your insurance card, your ID, and shot card. Let's say you don't pay with insurance, okay? You can't, but we'll get care of it. Alright? So that will be ahead of that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, at Lowpays. Then we go back to Coastal Family Health. So we've been doing this four years, and it's supposed to be that they've heard of this. The reason how we started this is the health department did not give a shot down, it shut down. So that's why we use our children now. Now, I'm very emotional those people that are around. And I would like to tell you that 2009, Biloxi Excel by Five started in your hands. In 2009, we were in partnership with all of my children, Sunbeam. Sunbeam did that Lowpays every summer. And we've been doing this, because we both is a art teacher and have been doing an art project with these children since 2009. Okay, nine years young men? Ten years. So we've been doing this for ten years. We're very, very excited about this. Now, what we're going to do, I'm going to ask Dr. Doughty and their colleagues to come up. And they're going to, we take the present, and we give, I got people that carry this. Sherri Bell is going to call and bring some people up. And we'll go from there. She's going to be the adult first. One, two, okay. How do you want to do it this way? Oh, I can't.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to introduce the children first. Mr. Guines, Keon Guines, who's been hunting for his daddy since he's gotten here. Madison Naji, who's been waiting to see the mayor. Ms. Jalen Reese. You know her name, huh, Jalen? Mr. Eli Griffin. I also wanted to note of our employees this year, they do a fantastic job. Of course, you can see the different disabilities and challenges they have to deal with. So I appreciate you greatly, and I'm going to call you up. Ms. Linda Yuren, who is our director. Ms. Bon Dividens, who's our assistant. And then we have, we make it a family ordeal. Mr. Chuck Yuren, who's our bus driving counselor. Ms. Brianna Yuren, who's one of the counselors, and Mr. Jared Strickland. Thank you.
Turn this way. Turn and look at that lady. Turn this way. Right here, right here, right here.
Alright, remember, we got to count. One, two, three. One, two, three. So on.
Okay. Please, the world wants to explain to you all some of the projects that she's done with these, excuse me, some of the projects she has done with these young people.
They've painted stained glass frogs. They've roller painted on canvas. They've painted wooden shapes. They've decorated pencil cups, red, white, and blue for Fourth of July. And they put together pom-pom crafts. And they're going to be decorating eggs and finger painting for the last one. We've also made a project for them. We always give the mayor something. And Mayor Fofo, you are our anchor.
Oh, wow.
So they painted, they painted an anchor.
Oh, thank you, awesome. I know exactly where it's going to be.
They painted the anchor and put their stars on there for the mayor.
Thank you.
My part was just putting it together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. We'll take our seats. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Doughty. Thank you, Eric.
We have some, it's a time longevity awards right now? Alright, here we go.
Okay. Alright, we're going to be announcing the second quarter longevity awards. And first, we have Mr. Gregory L. Uterus. For twenty years. Alright, next, we have Mr. Joseph Freeman, and for twenty years. And then lastly, we have Mr. Joseph Boney, for thirty-five years. And that's it?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. No departmental reports? We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
I hope everybody survived a little blowhead over the weekend. A few lengths out of the crew, other than that, we didn't have many problems. As long as the beach went well, Mayor. Any problems on the beach at all, other than that construction site?
A little bit of construction, as well as some waves over the bulkhead by Tommy Monroe, that part of the bulkhead that we just rebuilt.
Other than that, it was it?
Yep.
Did we lose any power poles on the, at the harbor?
Larry, I don't know. One down?
One. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Denman?
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared. That was the shortest I've ever heard.
That guy. I popped you there quick. You feel alright, Joey?
Thank goodness, we did have a very eventless weekend with Hurricane or Tropical Storm With that being said, there are still a lot of people in our community that need a lot of assistance from a lot of different people. And there's a gentleman here that's contributed a lot to our city, and now he's getting into helping out those groups that desperately need our help. So if you would allow me to, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, if you would indulge me in some time, and allow Pickleball Tom to come up and talk about what he's doing for our veterans.
This is going to be a painful, no, not painful. This is what we did last year with the donations that we got for the Gunner's Tournament. They were able to, the Fire Department was able to buy fifty-eight bicycle with fifty-seven bicycles with helmets for kids in our community. And the Police Department is law enforcement for special events. I admire one of our police cruisers the other day. And our cruiser is a law enforcement for Mississippi senior. My God, that's really apropos. This year, the tournament is going to be, oh, I'm sorry, I don't know how to shut this thing off. My wife does. But the tournament's going to be on the nineteenth of October. And our goal this year is to try to raise $10,000 for the charities. And last year, we had two councilmen that participated, and we're hoping to have more councilmen this year. We do have brackets for novices, and we have brackets for intermediates, and advanced players and everything else. So let's all support it. And I'm looking for donors. So we have donor letters going out. We had a lot of good donors last year, and I think we're going to have more this year. So I just wanted to announce that in advance. A second thing, I don't know if we're all aware of. It's a program.
The Veterans Pickleball Outreach Program has been established by the Mississippi Gulf Coast Pickleball Players and the City of Biloxi, Mississippi, for veterans enrolled in the Gulf Coast Veterans Healthcare System. The outreach program provides an additional link that helps veterans successfully assimilate back into the world, as many veterans refer to returning to their homes. Pickleball is a scheduled activity at GCVHCS, the Gulf Coast Veterans, okay, for the patients suffering from addictions, depression, PTSD, and other mental health issues. Since January 2019, veteran Mississippi Gulf Coast Pickleball Players have taught pickleball to over a hundred veterans. Spouses and partners are also encouraged to learn the sport, which fosters an activity they can share in the future. The program includes structured play with local players five times weekly, with special events twice per month. Recently, a pickleball scramble was held for the veterans with gold and silver medals awarded. Food is donated by local vendors at these events, which provide a great opportunity for veterans to interact with local pickleball players, families, and friends. Used paddles have been provided to veterans who express an interest in continuing to play pickleball when they return home to their local communities. Due to the demand, sources are being sought for donated paddles. A testament to the program's success is the continued growth in participation and positive comments from the veterans who have expressed how well they feel when they are playing pickleball. I can attest to how much it's grown, because he's asking me for every day at Snyder now. So, and we started out two days a week with four players home. So have at it, Mr. Paul.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom. Hey, Tom, hey, Tom? Tom, you need to put a little more heart into this, you know what I mean? Thank you, man, for what you do. Appreciate that.
This veteran left his, his name, I don't know. I got a ring on him, says. And he is in Parkview, San Antonio. He says, "On this present, mine own shall be true." These guys have suffered more for us, and I'm glad to hear it.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Tisner?
Yes, and I would like to commend Tom, simply because I remember having conversations with him a number of years ago. And it was, we have to find a place to play, and then we have to have a time at the location to play. And working with Sherri Bell, they were able to work some things out at the Snyder Center, and then they grew in numbers, that they needed additional courts, and they continue to grow. And I just know that in order to have a successful program, whether it's pickleball, or whether it's Excel by Five, you need people, number one, who are passionate about making their efforts fruitful and successful. And the second thing is, you have to be persistent. You have to keep knocking on doors, you have to keep talking with people, you have to keep going back to people, even when they're ducking into doorways and climbing under tables, you gotta go find them. And if they make believers out of you, then you're just as passionate about these programs as Tom Linnenberger is and Susan Hunt is. That's all. Commends you both. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. So Doc, that sounds like you're going to be playing pickleball in the next pickleball tournament. Is that correct?
Hold on, excuse me.
Are you going to be playing pickleball in the next pickleball tournament?
You had me confused with my brother.
No, come on out. It's not that hard, right, Tom? It's for anybody. And, but yeah, I'd like to also echo my colleague's comments. It's great for the community, it's great riding down Pops Ferry Road and seeing all the activity there. And it's become not only a physical, but a social kind of gathering, so to speak. And we even see y'all down at the White House and wind down Wednesday nights every once in a while there, so I guess celebrating your victories or talking about your next competition. I do have three things I want to follow up on, Public Works and Andor Engineering. Brazier and Water View, there's still that ditch in question that has a lot of falling trees and debris in it. It desperately needs to be cleared. If we could get some assistance from the county, I'm sure they'll help. I've talked to Supervisor Rocco and Martin, they're on standby. All we've got to do is ask for some assistance, and they'll help us with that. Also, there's the issue of the large ditch that we dug at Mall Pass Landing to relieve some of the water flow, but that's kind of creating another hazard for the kids in that neighborhood, that large ditch that they could either play or fall into, and we need to find a solution, maybe some covered culverts or something in there, in that effect. And then finally, I'd also like to point out, and this has been dragging on for some time, near the Corana Beenvue residence, we've been out there several times trying to take care of a little drainage issue back there, and we haven't made that connection to that, they ran some drain pipe, but we haven't made the final connection to really shed that water off those properties. It's, I can't tell you how many years, they can't even mow the lawn. When they mow the lawn, the lawnmower sinks down into the mud behind their front, their backyards. And we really need to try to find a way to take care of that. And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kenny. And we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing that we have for the public agenda. Fifteen minutes we're going to give to the appellate, Kathleen Magnates, and ten minutes for the applicant, Mary Bowles, then we're going to have a five-minute rebuttal. So we'll begin with the appellate.
Hello. I'm Kathleen Magnates. I reside at 544 Bee, well, not yet, I will soon, 544 Beach Boulevard. I had applied through HRC for a fence permit, which I was granted. Mary Bowles subsequently also applied for a fence permit in the same location. Twice, I came from Vero Beach here to the HRC meeting to express my, not wanting that to happen, first of all, it makes no sense to have two fences there, and second of all, we're a foot off of our property line, so we can maintain our fence line. Apparently, it was heard as old agenda. I wasn't aware that it was going to be heard, so therefore, I didn't make the final trip up, and it was approved. I'm asking that it not be approved, for the simple fact that it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever to have two fences. We've put a lot of investment into our property and the fence, and I'm just asking that it be reconsidered.
That's it? Alright. Is that it? You have questions? No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Denman.
I've read the, the agenda item, and I've even looked through some of the stuff. So you both applied for a fence permit?
I applied first. Mary just applied recently.
And you were denied?
I was never denied.
So you were approved?
I was approved.
Okay, so, it's a little confusing. So if you'd give me the entire facts, fact scenario.
This is, I believe Ms. Bowles lives at 540 Beach Boulevard, and that would be this house. This is where Ms. Bowles lives. Ms. Magnates and her husband are building the house on the west side of Ms. Bowles. But Ms. Magnates and her husband also own the vacant lot on the east side of Ms. Bowles. So Ms. Magnates came in and went before HRC and got approval to run a wooden fence near her new home, all the way up to the front building line, and I've got some side pictures I'll show you. And then on the vacant lot, she got a permit to run a fence north and south up to about halfway on Ms. Bowles' house, both on Ms. Magnates' property. The permit also included having, those are solid wood fences, you know, the one by six with the dogged edges on it. But from the front building line here, and from the end of the wooden fence over on the east side, from there out to Highway 90, she got approval for a wrought iron fence to go on either side. We issued a permit, Ms. Magnates built the wooden fence, and has since built the two wrought iron fences. After Ms. Magnates had gotten her approval, Ms. Bowles came in and wanted a permit to run a wrought iron fence right beside Ms. Magnates' wrought iron fence on either side. And, you know, we couldn't deny her coming in, you know, but it just simply didn't make sense to have two fences side by side with the same character. But there, you know, some disagreements going on between the two neighbors, and that's kind of at the root of some of this. But when it went to HRC, we thought that HRC would take the same position, that, you know, we can't grant her approval, because there's already a fence that we've approved there, and the permit has already been issued for it. And we actually, Bill Raymond wasn't there, but I read his recommendations actually stating that, that putting two fences next to each other in the historic district made absolutely no sense. But apparently, the HRC didn't comprehend what was being said, or didn't hear what was being said, and they voted to approve Ms. Bowles' fence as well. Well, when Ms. Magnates came in from out of town and found out that there was going to be another fence built right next to hers, she filed the appeal within the ten days, and that's why we're here today.
Jerry, when you say that, so my concern is, one, I don't want to disrupt the decision by the HRC, that's the purpose that we have them, if it's not, if it's founded. So my question for you is, I know you said that it doesn't make much sense to have two fences next to each other, but is there any, do we have any ordinance, a code, is there any legal foundation to deny based off, it doesn't make sense?
Other than the, other than the fact that it was determined that having the two fences next to each other is not appropriate in the historic district, it doesn't make sense. Can I point to a section of the code that says absolutely you can't have two fences next to each other? No, but I believe the reason for that is that the code assumes that no one would come in and ask to build a fence right next to someone else's fence. So it's, it's not specifically stated in the code, but there are some things that are applied in the code.
Who's responsible for the property in between the two fences? And is it reasonable that it can be cleaned out or maintained? It's your time, yes, ma'am? Jerry, how would this, how would this, I mean practically work? If you have a fence, two fences with one foot in between, how would they be maintained?
Well, that's a question, and that came up during the HRC meeting. You know, each person would be responsible for their property up to the property line, and, you know, for whatever maintenance would go on in between there. I would assume that only weed eating, you know, would be the main issue that would, that would come about in that one foot section. But that would be up to the property owners to figure that out. This, this shows you a little bit more, may make it a little bit clearer. This is Ms. Bowles' house here. The white over on the other side, that's the side of Ms. Magnates' house. This is the fence on the east side of Ms. Bowles' house that comes up to this point. And then the wrought iron has since been installed from here all the way down to the beach. On Ms. Magnates', on the other side of Ms. Bowles' house, Ms. Magnates' fence comes up to the front building line of hers. Her house is actually several feet in front of Ms. Bowles' house, as far as setback goes. But then from the, the south end of the wooden fence, it's wrought iron on out to Beach Boulevard.
Jerry, you don't have any better pictures than that? You have pictures of everything. You've got to have better pictures of that.
I've got several pictures here. This may, this may show it a little better. Again, here's Ms. Bowles' house. This is Ms. Magnates' house. The wooden fence comes up to the front of, what we call the building line, the front building line of Ms. Bowles' house. And then over on the other side, the fence comes up to the front building line, the solid fence, comes up to the front building line of Ms. Magnates' house.
Didn't it take any from the front pictures?
I'm sorry?
I don't know if these...
Yes, sir, I have pictures of the front.
Yeah, if you click on the link on the, on the pad, there are some pictures that are attached as exhibits, and there are some that, that show the property from different directions.
Yeah, if you, if you look here, again, here's Ms. Bowles' house, here's Ms. Magnates' house, this is, this fence had already been installed when we took the pictures. It's, it's wood up to the front building line, and then from there on out to the front is the wrought iron. So this is the one between here. The same thing would be replicated over on the other side of Ms. Bowles' house, from Ms. Magnates' fence out to Beach Boulevard.
Any other questions?
Nothing further.
Go ahead, Mr. Tisner.
So we're looking at the wrought iron fence of Mrs. Magnates?
Yes. Well, both of, both of the fences belong to Ms. Magnates, on both sides.
Right. And the Bowles' house is on the right?
That's correct.
And the Bowles' fence has not been constructed yet, but it's also wrought iron?
That's what she was proposing, is to come from the front of Ms. Magnates' fence on the east... the east side and then come out with wrought iron.
And that is a four-foot wrought iron fence?
Yes, I believe it's four-foot.
And Ms. Bowles wants to construct a four-foot wrought iron fence? So, that, they'd be the same height, they're just gonna be a foot apart?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it gonna be the same design?
It, it was close, uh, I don't think it was exact, but it was close.
Okay. And just from the comments of Mrs. Magnates, am I saying your name correctly? Okay. There are some other intangibles that account for this situation, and I'm sensitive to that. But if, if this moves forward and the appeal is denied, then you're gonna end up with two fences that pretty much, if not identical, are very similar, same height, a foot apart. My next question is, is Mrs. Bowles, who wants to construct this fence, is she being treated, or has she been treated any differently than any other homeowner on the beach who can put up a wrought iron fence?
No, sir, her, her application was heard, we didn't refuse her application when she brought it in.
Okay.
Uh, and of course, the issue before the city council today is, everything that HRC does is about visual, and what it looks like with regard to the historic district design guidelines. Uh, they vote on the visual appearance to make sure that not only is it designed historically, but that it doesn't take away from something else that's historical in the same neighborhood, and that's the basis of Ms. Magnates' appeal, is that she believes that by putting the two fences side by side, it damages or destroys the historic character of the fence that she's put up.
But by the same token, and this is another horn of the dilemma, you can't permit one homer, a one homeowner, to put up a four-foot wrought iron fence, and another homeowner who happens to live next door from putting up a wrought iron fence. Question, so suppose someone, the owner of the property on the west side of the Magnates' house, shown there, suppose that homeowner wants to put up a four-foot wrought iron fence, would that homeowner be permitted to do so or not permitted to, to do so? The question is really rhetorical.
It, it would really, it would really depend on who came in with the application first to, to put it up. If, if, if Ms. Magnates put, if they put another fence on the other side of their structure, um, and, uh, and someone came in on that property to put one in, and they got their permit before Ms. Magnates did for the wrought iron section to come down to the beach, then we would issue the permit. I mean, subject to HRC approval, we would issue the permit.
Okay. I guess my point is, and it depends on your perspective, obviously, that's why you have a commission that hears it, that's why we're hearing it as an appeal.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm having a tough time getting past, I guess, the, the thought that if I put up my fence first, neither one of my neighbors adjacent can put up a fence or have any say about that fence, what it looks like. I'm assuming that you couldn't have a wooden privacy fence all the way down to Highway Ninety, so that, that's why you have the wrought iron, it's got, I would assume something decorative.
Well, actually, actually, you could have a wood fence all the way down, it just couldn't be six feet high.
Right, so it might drop down or taper to four feet, but all, all the way out. So, if I'm a homeowner who doesn't have a fence, and my neighbor, my neighbors on either side have wooden privacy fences, and I'd really like something more decorative, I'm out of, to shorten it, I'm out of luck.
Well, I, I mean, this happens every day, someone comes in to put a permit.
What it also means is, because I purchased my property later, I can't build a fence that I would like to on my property, but my neighbors could.
Mm-hmm.
That's, okay, that's all.
Jerry, I have a question. Just that picture, that's east to the right?
Yes, sir.
And west to the line?
That's right.
That fence is one foot on Ms. Magnates' property, right?
Yes, sir.
So, the property line is one foot, uh, to the right of that fence?
That's correct.
And, uh, Ms. Bowles wants to put another one out on the property line, or one foot, so is it gonna be two feet or one foot between the fences?
Hers would be one foot on this side of that existing fence.
And that, it'll be on that property line? It won't be one foot like...
That's right, it'll be on the property line.
So, it will be just one foot in between two fences?
Yes, sir.
I got a couple of questions for Jerry, if you, Doc, are you finished? So, first of all, what was the vote with the planning commission? Just, do you recall? Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous, uh, in the beginning, uh, the chairman, uh, was concerned that, you know, we're voting on something here that the, the historic administrator has recommended not be approved, and he agreed that it didn't make sense to have two fences side by side, but when he saw that the rest of them voted for it, he voted for it.
Okay. I, I certainly wanna hear the rebuttal in a minute, but I do have another question. Had it been a, the second fence, had they applied and it would have been a true privacy fence, 'cause they wanted privacy, not the see-through slats, would that have, in your opinion, make a difference? I mean...
I don't think so. I, I think, uh, what HRC does is, they, they look at the fence to see if it, uh, has some historic quality to it, and if it ties in with the construction of the house that's being built.
Right, so I'm, and again, I can't wait to hear the comments from the rebuttal, but I'm trying to understand, another fence, similar, side by side, duplication of, kinda, I don't know what it's gonna look like, but it logically, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm, I'm compromising part of my property to put a foot, but everybody loves to have their inches of, of property. I, I'm trying to grasp that right now. So, I, I'd love to hear the rebuttal and, and some of the thoughts on the other side.
I'm gonna ask you one question, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
If they both put it on their property line at the end, you'd have sense to touch to each other, could you do that? But they pushed it to the end of the property, no foot in between, would you allow that?
Well, two fences on that property. If they, in order to do that now, Ms. Magnates would have to have her fence moved over a foot to get it to the property line.
We can move it over a half a foot and problem solved, huh?
Well, actually, actually, it would have to go over one foot, it would have to go over one foot to line up with the, the wooden fence that's there, and to get it to her property line. She, she purposely came, there's a lot of things that I can't discuss here about the two property owners and some differences that they've had, but, uh, she was very concerned about putting it right on the property line for fear that, uh, it would create problems, uh, with the neighbor, so. That's why she...
Yeah, can I interject? So, one thing jumped out at me real quick, and, um, I'm sympathetic to, you know, the design of, of the historic fences and maintaining that, and I hate when the government becomes the arbiter of people's property rights, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis, so one person's exercising of their property rights restricts somebody else's exercise of the exact same right. So, that bothers me, but, but just logically, um, if this is Ms. Bowles' property, and this is Ms. Magnates' property, how does Ms. Magnates maintain that one foot? And if you put the fence there on Ms. Bowles' property line, how then would that one foot be maintained? But my, my concern is, is I don't know how that's gonna be maintained, and of course, it's their, it's, it's, if Ms. Bowles puts it on her property line, it's not Ms. Bowles' problem. Once Ms. Bowles puts a fence on her property line, it then becomes Ms. Magnates' problem of how does she maintain that one foot that she can't get access to? However, how does she get access to that one foot without crossing over onto Ms. Bowles' property line to maintain that one foot anyway?
Well, you actually, anytime you have a zero-lot line structure, you actually, whether it's a house, or whether it's a fence, or whatever, you have the right, a, a five-foot wall maintenance agreement is what it's, easement is what it's called, you always have the right to cross over onto your neighbor's property to maintain your fence or the side of your house.
Well, that's interesting, so, so one resident builds a fence on their property line, and then it gives them an automatic trespass or free pass into somebody else's property up to five yards, up to five feet?
Five feet.
That's good.
It, it's just an easement, you can't do any damage on that side, but you have the right to go over onto the neighbor's property to maintain the side of your house or your fence.
Wow, okay.
So, you're gonna have to have a skinny yard man, huh?
Can you take that, uh, picture back up? That same picture? Good morning, I appreciate you all listening to us this morning. I'm Mary Bowles. Yeah, that's good. And, um, I'm, um, a resident of 540, and it's close to Pelican Cave, and so when I was interested...
Ms. Bowles, would you grab the mic and bring it closer to your mouth? It's, it's very...
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll use this voice. So, when, um, we built, we have lost, um, homes to Camille and to Katrina, and the second time, we were not gonna rebuild, but our kids said, "Go ahead and do it, we'll help you design it and do it." So, we did. So, we were the first people back on that particular block and have been there for, through like, uh, last year when the Magnates' came along from Vero Beach and from Hattiesburg. And, um, so since we had, uh, neighbors, and, um, I've grown up there, so I knew where the property lines were, and, uh, we were proud to be by Pelican Cave, 'cause it was a wonderful new foundation by, um, a previous mayor, who said, "We're gonna make this a, a residential and a multipurpose area, so families can come, or folks can come and stay in a condo," and it's a welcoming kind of feeling that we had in our area. So, we've been content, and the Magnates' came, and, uh, they started talking, we started talking about, probably Jerry Creel said, "Y'all should build a fence," and so I said, "Okay, that's fine." So, we'll build, um, I, I looked out, and I saw Pelican Cave's fence, okay, it's a simple fence, it's open, and as, as the picture shows there, it doesn't block your visibility, and that's what's important to us, that we can enjoy the beach, the sand, the gulf, the sailboats, and all the wonderful Deer Island visions out there. My husband is handicapped, he's not very mobile, so to be able to encompass that view when, it just gives you a relaxing, more comfortable feeling. So, um, we built our house, and, uh, I have vegetation...